Alright. It's seven o'clock. Right, I'm going to call this meeting of the Livermore City Council, June 8th to order. Roll call please. Ms. City Clerk.
Councilmember Carling.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coomer.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
I'm here. Alright, I'm going to, actually, I shall please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to reorder the agenda right now. We're going to be doing 2.01 first, then we're moving to 4.02. That is the resolution amending the Climate Action Plan Advisory Committee Rules of Procedure. And then we'll do 2.02. So just a slight reorder of the agenda. We'll be doing 2.01 first, 4.02, and then 2.02. Ready? Got that? Okay, with that, this is National Safety Month. And this is safety awareness. So with that, we have a proclamation recognizing this is Safety Awareness Month, June 2020. Whereas, at no other time in recent history has the city of Livermore employees and residents been more, has the safety of city of Livermore employees and residents been more paramount than it is now due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the rate of accidental injuries and related deaths, as well as pandemic-related illnesses and deaths in the United States remains at unacceptable levels. And whereas city of Livermore employees and residents deserve to live and work in communities that promote safety, safe and healthy living. And whereas the city of Livermore supports national safety efforts and has taken a proactive stance in providing a safe and healthy work environment for its employees and residents through the formation of the Central Safety Committee and through the development of new safety protocols. And whereas city of Livermore employees, including the Central Safety Committee, worked to ensure the safety of all city of Livermore employees and residents by providing training, education, and outreach, and encouraging continual improvement in community and workplace safety and health. And whereas the city, Livermore City Council wishes to join the members of the National Safety Council and other organizations in their annual observance of June as National Safety Month. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims June 2020 as Safety Awareness Month and urges all citizens to help reduce accidents, injuries, and illnesses by practicing safe and healthy behaviors in all aspects of their lives. June of 2020. Now with that, we go to 2.02. I'm sorry, 4.02, 4.02. This is from the consent calendar. This is the resolution amending the Climate Action Plan Advisory Committee. Do I have a motion?
So move?
Okay, moved by Councilmember Monroe. I think it's seconded by Councilmember Carling. Can I see your hand up there?
No.
There was the other bomb.
Oh, other bomb, okay. That's Vice Mayor Warner. I've got to get my hands up here, but.
There are three.
Pardon me?
I said there are three. The other bomb is not.
I understand, yeah. But I was thinking, one of Bob Carling just took off mute. So, moved by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on favor? I, oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Roll call first.
Wait, I have something to say.
Okay, wait a minute. Let me, let me get, I have to get my participants up. Okay, there we go. So I can, now I can see who's got their hand raised. Alright. Councilmember Monroe.
I think Councilwoman Carling had something to say. Not me.
Okay, Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I think it's unnecessary going from 11, from nine to 11. So I'm against expand, just, I'm just going to tell you, I'm against expanding it from nine to 11.
Okay, this was a decision that was made by the committee themselves that there was.
I know.
Yes, well, okay. Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of expertise that they wanted to have included. And so recognizing that you would prefer to keep it at nine, the committee recommends 11. So with that, I'm going to ask for the roll call.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
No.
Vice Mayor Warner?
No.
Mayor Marshawn?
Hi. Okay, so that, that passes. Now moving on to 2.02, which is the reorganization or the confirmation of the advisory body appointments to the Climate Action Plan Advisory Committee. That's Anne Brown, Peter Caldwell, Kurt Covey, David Dawson, Peg Folta, Tony Green, Jennifer Hayes, Daniel Lieberman, Madeline Love Doll, Eric Peterson, and Naomi Sue. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll continue. I'll move the approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Coomer, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Marshawn?
Hi. Okay, so we really can't do the swearing in at this point. So they'll just be sworn in at a later date?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Look forward to that. Okay, moving on to 2.03, One Water Award Presentation for Water Awareness Month.
Honorable Mayor, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts, and Natalie Crook from our Water Resources Division will be sharing some information with us on Water Awareness Month. Natalie?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Every school year, the Water Resources Division encourages Livermore students to explore the importance of water in their daily lives. One of the ways this is accomplished is through participating in the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District's Science Odyssey, which is a science fair for first to 12th graders. Since 2015, the Water Resources Division has presented the One Water Awards at this event to give special recognition to students who have completed exceptional science projects related to drinking water, wastewater, or stormwater issues. This year, we were pleased to have Zone 7 Water Agency join us as a partner on this award for the first time. Under normal circumstances, we would have loved to invited these students to a city council meeting to share their discoveries with the community. However, since that's not possible this year, we decided to invite our first place winners in each age group category to create videos of their science project presentations to share with us today. So without further ado, I will show you this year's One Water Award-winning projects. And please let me know if the volume is not working on this.
Hello, I am Napita Cardley in Grade 3 at Rancho Las Pecitas Elementary School in Livermore. My goal of this project was to build a cost-effective research testing material where I could purify the water with biomaterials at home that you could build. If I was able to build, if I was able to build and test my water efficiently, I was wondering if I could, where can the water go after I purified it? So my materials used were two containers. I used foreign cops, as you can see. And I use geotextile cloth as a better absorbent. I also use fine-grained sand, bravo, and also some activated carbon, activated chunk absorbent to lowest absorbent. Because if I purify the water, maybe at the top, on the bottom, it'd be way easier and get more, get more accurate results. So before I tested my water, my water looked very dirty like this. After I purified my water, my water looked more like drinking water. The data, the data that I have got showed that my, my inert water had a lot of hardness. There is 0.5% chlorine, which is okay in a way. And the alkalinity was not in the correct range. PH is a little bit too low. And nitrite, nitrate, not also good. And copper was the most important. And we were expecting no copper, but it was unfortunately, we had copper. And after I have tested my clear and purified water, I figured out that the range was not in drinking water, unfortunately. But I could use it for gardening purposes. This is why groundwater purification is a cost-effective way to purify water with biomaterials. Thank you. It is not some innocent push of a button. In one button, a lot of water, a lot of gallons of waste. We have to find a way around that. My question, how much water is needed to flush away fake human waste from a porcelain tile with or without a coating? I had to find a way to make a baked feces recipe. So I used flour, cocoa powder, canola oil, and tap water to make my feces. To coat my porcelain tile, I used canola oil, toothpaste, butter, vinegar, dish soap, ketchup, dishwasher soap, and water repellent. I then started the procedure. I placed the porcelain tile at a 40-degree angle on a Lego tile holder. To make sure it was clean, I cleaned the tile thoroughly. Then I put the coating or no coating. After that, I put one-half teaspoon of baked feces in the center of porcelain tile, which was the same location each time. Then I opened the faucet all the way up. And at the same time, I started turning and measured how long till the baked feces was completely removed. We found that either ketchup or toothpaste coating speed up the removal of the feces from the tile by about five times when compared to the no coating case. It's possible that the reason for this is that the water quickly dissolves away the ketchup and toothpaste and removes the feces with it. After watching this, do not go scrubbing the toilet bowl with ketchup or toothpaste. But we should take this into consideration that we should find a coating that works best for toilets. Thank you for watching.
Hi, I'm Yoav, and I wrote a computer program using C# that asks the user for various information regarding their water usage on specific household appliances. And then it calculates their total water usage and displays it to them using multiple ways. Here is the intro page where it tells you how to fill out the questionnaire. These pictures are of a sample run that I filled out. This is the results page where it presents the user with their total water usage. The user can then press the button at the bottom to return to the beginning of the program so they can see how reducing appliance usage affects their total water usage to promote water conservation.
Over the past five years, since this award has been created, we've been happy to see a growing number of students choose water-related topics for their science projects. The Water Resources Division is committed to continuing to foster Livermore students' understanding and appreciation of this important resource. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, Miss Crook. Greatly appreciate that. I was fortunate enough to be at the Science Odyssey at Junction K8 School when those awards were presented. I was actually able to present the Zone 7 Awards with Sandy Figures, who's on the Zone 7 Board of Directors as well. So a lot of really, really interesting projects out there. And there's a lot of good scientists that are coming up. So certainly appreciate the presentation. Any other comments from the council? Alright, moving on to Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action during the Citizens Forum. I asked if they keep the presentations to less than, by, less than three minutes or 500 words. And I will now hand it off to the city clerk. Senate City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. City Clerk's office, please read the comments for Zoom.
We have, we've received one public comment, and as our policy, we will read the most recent from that person. This comment is from Brittany Kick, and it says, "I would like to see the creation of an advisory commission on policing as well as an equity committee made up of residents and community leaders with diverse representation of race, age." And it's E-X-O-N-O-Y background. I'm assuming that might be economic. "This issue goes far beyond policing and seeps into all systems of government and public services. I would also like the city council to review and address its current policy of minimum wage pay and no health insurance for council members and recognize how this policy disproportionately keeps black and brown bodies out of local public office." And that concludes the comments from Zoom.
We have one additional from Zoom, from Chris Skinnell, and he submitted several. So I will go ahead and read the last one. "For nearly 40 years, the CSSFA has regulated self-storage relationships, reflecting the legislature's careful balancing of operators' rights against customers. The order unnecessarily disrupts this balance without substantial reason to do so. We therefore ask that, rather than rubber stamp the order as staff requests, you take this opportunity to excise the portion that illegally seeks to prohibit lean sales under the CSSFA. Bring it into compliance with state law and protect the constitutional rights of operators so the courts don't have to." And will you please read our public comments, City Clerk's office, from YouTube?
There are no public comments submitted through YouTube at this time.
Mayor, that's all the public comment we have received.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I would like to say that we did receive public comment from Ian Carlin and also from Shane Yarborough. So those are part of the packet, and the city council has, has received those. We've also reviewed those. Thank you very much for your comments. And also, we received the letter from the trades, from the building trades. And certainly, thanks to Brian Warner for that. So we have received those.
Excuse me, did we get any chat comments?
We have read the public comment received over Zoom, but we did just receive two more. City Clerk's office, would you like to read those, please?
Okay. Alright, we received a comment from Evan, Public Comment 3.0. "Can the city please adopt the mayor's pledge as a resolution and commit to these four actions as a starting point? Review, one, review your police use of forces policies. Two, engage your communities by including a diverse range of input experiences and stories in your review. Three, report the findings of your review to the community and seek feedback. Four, reform your community's police use of force policies." And then we also received from AA. It says, "Curious whether there are plans to decrease the greater than 30% funding for the police department to redirect towards community services." And then we also have one more, and it's a question from Marilyn Dysktra, D-Y-S-D-Y-K-S-T-R-A. Do our Livermore police use community-based or evidence-based policing?
Okay. Alright, I'm going to close the public comment period. Let's see. First off, I'm happy to tell Evan that I, in fact, did sign on to the mayor's pledge. And we have committed to those. I signed on to that last week. And I'd like to direct the question regarding the community-based or evidence-based over to our police chief, Chief Harris.
Good evening, honorable mayor. This is your chief, Michael Harris. And yes, we do practice community-based policing. It's pretty much foundational to, to our department. And we have what we have called an area command model. So the community is broken up into four areas, and the officers are assigned to those specific areas. And we have lieutenants as area commanders. And the point of that is to build relationships and not, you know, over time, and get to know residents and understand the different issues in the different areas and to work toward root cause solutions and crime prevention. So yeah, it's heavily based in everything that we do.
Very good. Thank you. Also, under the wire, there is a comment from Cat. "Would the city address on the social media platforms the current issues condemning police brutality?" Chief Harris and I have both commented on police brutality issues on Nextdoor, on the city website, and also on the Facebook for the police department. So those, those are all part of the social media platforms. So thank you for bringing that up. With that, closing the public comment period and moving on to the consent calendar. We have 4.01 to 4.13. Zayw should pull one of those for discussion. We've already voted on 4.02. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for 4.01, 4.03 through 4.13.
I'll move acceptance of all those.
Moved by Councilmember Carling. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on the motion? I will say that I think we've had the local emergency long enough, but I will certainly support the resolution, continuing the efforts. All in favor of the motion? We have a roll call.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn?
Hi. Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, we have 5.01, which is the Fire Hazard Abatement Program Protest Hearing and Resolution.
Honorable Mayor, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts, one more time. And I'm going to introduce Ryan Rucker, who was our fire marshal for the Livermore Buzzington Fire Department. Mr. Rucker.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. On April 27, 2020, the council adopted Resolution 2020-050, declaring existing conditions of growing weeds, accumulated refuse, rubbish, or dirt on private property, streets, parkways, and sidewalks adjacent to each parcel of real property are a public nuisance and should be evaded. Personal owners have been advised, first off, that abatement is an essential service, and to abate weeds and debris which constitute fire hazards. Abatement standards have been mailed to owners or posted conspicuously on their property in cases where a mailing address was insufficient. Property owners can avoid enforcement by completing abatement work in accordance with guidelines or protest the need to abate hazard at this public hearing. Staff recommends that the city council considers any and all protests, and if the council finds it appropriate, adopt a resolution overruling protests and direct staff to proceed with necessary weed abatement on all parcels requiring abatement. Is available at this time for questions.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Rucker had a question that came up from a constituent off of Old Oak. So between Old Oak and Sienna, the Semex property, it's kind of interesting because the Semex property immediately abates Livermore. Semex itself is in the county, but there are a lot of weeds that are growing up to the fence. And the resident was concerned that that presented a fire hazard. Do we have any means of abating that?
We can certainly abate that to the degree it's in the city's jurisdiction and reach out to other jurisdictions in the county that may be able to take the ball from things on that end.
Okay, good. Yeah, it's the Semex property, the quarry just, just south of the Livermore.
Honorable mayor, this is your city manager again. And Semex does traditionally abate the area at the boundary of their property, essentially on the side adjacent to the city as well as on the side adjacent to the county on that. They are aware of this situation, and they've noted that their abatement from their using their internal staff, Semex, is scheduled to begin later this week.
Okay, very good.
We do expect that to be taken care of.
Okay, I will respond to the resident. Thank you very much. Okay, let's, any, any questions from the council? I will open the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public? Senate City Clerk?
Mayor, no comments have been received, but I would like to remind our viewers to submit their item number with their comment.
Okay, so noted. Okay, seeing no comments, I'm going to close the public hearing on 5.01 and bring it back to the council. Any comments from the council? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Monroe?
I have a comment, which is simply that as we head into fire season, just to remind everybody how important this really is. And this is not a light matter. We've got a pandemic going on. I prefer not to have fires going on as well. And I appreciate the weed abatement and, you know, simply for a matter of safety. And I'll make a motion unless someone else has a comment.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe. Do we have any further comments? Do I have a second?
Second.
Who got the second?
Coomer.
Okay. Second on Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Hi.
Councilmember Carley.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshon.
Hi. Moving on to 5.02, this is the introduction of an ordinance and adoption of two resolutions related to a general plan amendment with zoning map amendment and plan development for a portion of the Civic Center property. And I'd like to remind everybody that this was part of a vision from our Vice Mayor, Bob Werner, that saw this as a possibility to do a land swap between the Stockman Association and the city, which gives us Stockman Park in the downtown and allows us to put critically needed veteran and affordable housing and senior housing on this campus. So with that, I will hand this off to staff.
Honorable Mayor, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts, and I am pleased to introduce Andy Ross from our planning department, who will lead us through this next item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, good evening, Mayor Marshon, members of the city council. Tonight's item is the proposed amendment to the general plan and a zoning map amendment, which would allow future development of affordable housing on the Civic Center campus. If ultimately approved tonight, the city's affordable housing development partner would return with a site plan design review application at a future date with a development proposal. The current Civic Center campus is located on the east side of South of Moore Avenue here and south of Pacific Avenue shown here. And it is comprised of City Hall, Police Building, the library, council chambers and a multi-service center as well as a photovoltaic solar field approximately here. The site surrounded by residential and open space uses, including affordable housing developments and a skate park. The site was purchased by the city in 1982, 1962, rather. It's approximately 33 acres and it was purchased from the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association. Under the agreement with the Stockman's Association, the use of the property was limited to civic uses and the development of a park that commemorates the contribution of the Stockmans to the United States Armed Forces. In January 2018, as part of the downtown planning process, the city and the Stockman's Rodeo Association amended their original agreement for development of the Civic Center campus. The amended agreement allows the city to develop a portion of the Civic Center site with senior and veterans' housing in exchange for construction of Stockman's Park in downtown. Upon amending the agreement, the city council directed staff to take the necessary actions to facilitate affordable housing on the site. The city has entered into an exclusive negotiating rights agreement with Satellite Affordable Housing Associates and Interfaith Housing to ultimately construct and operate an affordable housing project on this site and to fill the Stockman's agreement and facilitate affordable housing for seniors and veterans. The Civic Center property needs to be re-designated for residential uses. The site shown here, known as the Pacific Avenue site, is located just on the south side of Pacific Avenue near the terminus of the street. The site is approximately three and a half acres. It's undeveloped, relatively flat and is adjacent to other Civic Center uses and open space uses, including the skate park, nearby cemetery and other residential uses. Currently, the the Pacific Avenue site is designated Community Facilities Civic Center, indicating that the vision for the area is civic uses, as mentioned before, police, library and other administrative facilities. Staff is proposing to designate the site to Urban High Residential Category 6. This designation establishes a density range of 38 to 55 dwelling units per acre, which would achieve the anticipated 140 dwelling units for the site. The designation accommodates a range of attached housing types, including apartments, and is generally located in areas with adequate infrastructure, public services and amenities to support these higher densities. Further, the category is intended to provide housing opportunities for all income groups in the community, including affordable housing. The designation would be consistent with broader general plan goals and policies to provide a range of housing at various income levels that address the diverse needs of Livermore residents in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood context. The current zoning for the site is educational and institution or E-zone. This zone is applied to areas of the city that are appropriate for public and educational uses, publicly owned parks and recreational facilities and areas where one would expect to find governmental buildings and facilities. The city is proposing a planned development residential district that would limit permitted uses to affordable housing and related ancillary support services. The proposed development standards respond to the unique shape and configuration of this site. These include reducing the front and side setbacks in order to allow a higher concentration of development in the northern portion of the site adjacent to Pacific Avenue and as well as increasing the height standards to maximize development of this area. In addition, the planned development standards establish a parking requirement to reflect ratios typically experienced in senior living facilities of half parking space or 0.5 parking spaces per unit. This is lower than the standard residential parking ratios. However, this rate's been used on other similar projects here in Livermore, such as Heritage Estates and Chestnut Square. The Livermore Development Code requires that residential plan developments provide a design feature in exchange for variations from conventional zoning standards. And affordable housing is considered a design feature to compensate for that variation. Because this proposed project is 100% affordable, the planned development satisfies that requirement. So your planning commission and staff recommend that you adopt a resolution certifying the environmental document. And after approval, instruct staff to file a notice of determination with the Alameda County Clerk, adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment, which would designate the site for residential land uses and also recommend introducing an ordinance for a zoning map amendment, which would establish planned development residential standards for the future development of affordable housing on this portion of Civic Center property. So following the approval of a general plan and zoning changes, again, the city's affordable housing partner would return with a site plan design review application. That concludes staff's presentation and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff? Okay, I got a couple of questions. The plan proposes a 0.5 parking spaces per unit. What is the current parking ratio at Arbor Vista and Hillcrest Gardens?
Honorable Mayor, I think you may have, you have made it, may have done just on that one. Both of those are senior projects and both of them do have parking ratios lower than our standard parking ratio on that. Andy, do we know the exact standard on both of those? Those are a little older projects.
I do not know the exact standard.
But have we found this? So you said that the 0.5 is is in some of the other areas. Have we found that to be sufficient or is that on after, after the fact, we find that they need more parking?
It's generally found sufficient. We've talked to our affordable housing development partners and usually some of the support services we're alluding to are things like shuttles or other transportation to meet that. So that folks do not need the use of a private automobile.
Okay, all right. Another question. Looking at the site photo, would it be possible to build the housing on the north side, north of the property? Yeah, there we go. And then move the solar array to the top of that housing and then possibly add more housing to the south of that site and then put another solar array on top of that. This is one of those things where I've been thinking the three most terrible terrifying words for the city manager.
Honorable Mayor, your city manager, we did do some exploration of this. And while it it might be possible, it creates some fairly significant hurdles. The first item is that moving the solar panels off of a property which is controlled as part of the Civic Center onto a property controlled as affordable housing creates some challenges with our current agreement with PG&E and how the site is metered. It is essentially one site and so we are essentially producing onsite power. The rules are slightly different for offsite, but we can do some further exploration on that. The other item is that the area is, does have a debt instrument on it related just to the solar field. And so we would need to involve the provider of the financing for that. And then finally, as you know, affordable housing financing is a very competitive business. And so that may create some challenges with with that. All of those things being said, it is not a slam dunk, but we will take a look and see whether there's any opportunity. Because clearly it's very valuable land and we certainly want to make sure we're using the best use of it. And if we can, we can do multiple uses in some areas, we will take a look at that. But our initial look noted that we had a couple of fairly significant barriers.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to see if somebody was looking at that. Are you, any other questions for staff?
This is Bob Werner.
Yes.
If I may, I can't figure out with the way we're into this to raise the hand because the normal way that I
I don't see any, I, I had the, the share screen here, but I didn't see anybody's hands go up.
Yeah, I don't have the raised hand either.
Yeah, I, I can see where you can raise them, but I'm looking at my, my screen here and it's not, it doesn't show anybody. I don't see any raised hands.
So sorry to trouble you, but I think it's because we came in this time as co-hosts as opposed to the way we normally do. So that might be the reason.
Yeah, that's probably why. The host can't raise their hand.
So I wanted to point out, we can't do our normal hand raising. So okay, we'll just do it like that or something.
There we go. That works. Works really well.
All right. So I agree with you that, and I'm glad you asked whether we could use that solar field in the future. So I guess the question of the city manager is, you know, how long is that debt instrument? And I would imagine typically something like that's 20, 30 years for the contract. But is there any way in the, we can plan for the future that we could use this site? So does, is there anything in the design of the buildings on the current allowed site that we would need to do to take into account the potential future expansion when this solar field gets replaced? That's one question.
Okay, that's a great idea and we can actually refer that back to the designers because I think there certainly are some things that we could do. And, you know, both of these, both the solar field and the affordable housing project will have fairly complex, especially the affordable housing site will have fairly complex financing on it. But let us do a little exploration of that here at the front end to see if there's anything that we could do to make that ultimately placing additional solar on the site easier.
And then the other question along with that, are we planning sort of to maximize the amount of solar we can put on the roofs of the housing project that we're envisioning?
And again, I think that we are in the very early stages of that. So normally we would maximize the amount up to the amount used on site. But for a multi-story project, that would generally be, you know, putting pretty much what you can on the roof there and then over any parking areas that we have that are surface. But that item, we will pass along to the designers as they are continuing to work out their site plan.
And so I think that, because we could envision if it's possible to go beyond what the needs of that site are and think about it, ultimately what you'd want to do here is maximize the amount of solar on the new site with the knowledge that eventually the current solar field will need to be replaced. And maybe if we think that through at the get-go, we're, we're ahead of the game.
Very good.
And so then the other, of course, I've got, it's really minor, but in the materials, one of the principles, a name is misspelled is again, I don't need to mention that here. Do I, we can fix that later?
Yes.
Okay, good. And at, when the time comes and if there, are there any other comments from the rest of the council? Because if not, then I would get around to making the motion.
I'm going to open the public hearing first.
Okay, right.
And then, and then I'll, I'll remember you for the motion. Okay, any further questions from the council? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Now, the city clerk, do we have any, any comments from the public?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Warner.
I didn't quite do it. If you could, I said I was going to, but could you put the screen back up that says what the staff recommendation is?
You're getting there. There we go.
So I, I see this as a actually three-part. And so in one motion, I'd like to move all three parts of this.
Okay, so
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilman Carling. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, now the city clerk.
From Monroe.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carley.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshon.
Hi. Okay, passed unanimously. Moving on to matters for consideration, 6.01. This is a resolution acknowledging the withdrawal of the initiative measure entitled the Citizens Initiative Changing Development Regulations in Downtown Livermore, et cetera. Okay. Staff presentation on this.
Honorable Mayor, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts, and I'm going to introduce your city attorney, Jason Alcala, who's going to lead us through this particular item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jason Alcala and I am your city attorney. This item before you involves the Citizens Initiative that qualified to be placed upon the ballot for the November 3, 2020 election. This is the measure to change development regulations in downtown Livermore and to amend regulations to allow housing at the Civic Center Plaza, very similar to what you just, just approved. The proponent for that measure is Tamara Royce, who in May of 2019 filed with the city her notice of intent to circulate that petition along with other documents required by the elections code. Last August, as required by the California Elections Code, the city council placed the measure on the ballot for the November 3, 2020 election. Even though the proponent's initiative was placed upon the ballot, the elections code grants a proponent substantial authority over her measure and specifically allows the proponent to withdraw her measure from the election ballot. On, most recently on May 14, 2020, the proponent Tamara Royce filed a notice with the city to withdraw her citizens initiative from the November ballot. Even though the withdrawal was effective when the notice was received, the California Elections Code requires the city to provide a new resolution to the elections official to process the proponent's withdrawal and state the specifics concerning that withdrawal. Staff recommends you adopt a resolution to process the proponent's withdrawal of her initiative to replace the city council's prior resolution. The proposed resolution for this evening acknowledges that the measure has been withdrawn by the proponent, replaces the prior resolution that was sent to the Alameda County Register of Voters, who helps us with our elections, and to direct staff to process the proponent's withdrawal of her citizens initiative from the November 2020 ballot. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Any questions for staff at this point? Okay. Let's see, I'm going to move on to the, I'm going to open the public comment period. Is there any public comment?
City Clerk's office, will you please read the public comments from Zoom?
This comment is from Evan. I want to thank everyone for allowing cooler heads to prevail here. It is time to move on and begin implementation of the downtown plan and I look forward to continued progress on the project. This has been a divisive debate over many years, but I believe we have the best plan and we will have a downtown that is the envy of communities throughout the region. The city listened to the voters and all their constituents, taking input from all of the sources available to come to this plan. And I'm very glad to see we will not need to continue this debate. I thank the opponents of the downtown plan for listening to the voters and pulling their ill-planned initiative. Now together we can move forward and the city Now together we can move forward and the city with the city approved plan and build the best downtown possible for Livermore. And that concludes the comments for Zoom.
Mayor, no public comments have been received for you two.
Okay, um, in that case, I'm going to close the public comment period. This, this is something that I've really struggled with. The reason being is we heard from scores of people, I mean, there were literally scores of letters to the editor and scores of people came up and spoke at the dais that they were demanding the right to vote on this. And people that were threatening to withdraw or to remove the city council members if they, we didn't allow people to vote on it. We heard that sixty-seven hundred people sign this petition demanding the right to vote on it. And now we haven't heard from a single person from that group that is, that is speaking out on this. So we heard from all these people demanding a vote and now it's being taken away. There's silence and it's, it's almost like this was just an orchestrated theater where people came up with scripts. And it was just, it was just, it was theater is what it was. And it, it seems the community may have been conned. In, uh, Mr. Dunlop's comments, in his statement, uh, he said that the, uh, city leaders were, uh, working with a professional mediator. And, uh, so a quick question for the, the, the city attorney. At any time did the city enter into mediation with the, uh, the Central Park Group?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney. No, the city did not engage in mediation.
Okay, because when they start talking about that, we have the, they have these concepts that they'd like us to consider and that, uh, that they're willing to accept the location of the hotel. Well, we heard not long ago from, from Steve Stewart that, uh, our planner, that over eighty percent of the public wanted the hotel on South Livermore Avenue. And, and now we said that they, that they've agreed to, to have the hotel there. Uh, and they've agreed to have a four-story hotel. Well, we had a four-story hotel and that went away when they referended it. Otherwise, we had a four-story hotel. So when I, I go down the, this list about the plans they're willing to accept, those are already done. Veterans Park is, or Veterans Way is built, Stockman's Park is built. So the city already did those in spite of the Central Park Group. Another thing that really concerns me is I'm looking at these concepts. And again, it's been inferred that the city agreed to these during this mediation, which we now know did not happen. But the, uh, return the hotel to a high-quality hotel Marriott, well, it's always been that. That, that's not a change. That concept didn't change. That was always the city's plan. The, uh, the residential developers' consideration of relocating and housing. Now that's, I've never heard of that until I saw it in, in Mr. Dunlop's statement. But in order for that to happen, we got, we, the city and, and Eden Housing got a fourteen million dollar competitive grant. Measure A grant from Alameda County. So if there's any discussion about moving this residential, that means we're going to lose that fourteen million dollars. So if this group is serious about the city considering that, are they going to make the city whole? Are they going to make up that fourteen million dollars so that there can be an honest discussion around this? Because if, if they're not willing to make up the fourteen million dollars that we will lose by moving this project, then for them to suggest that we would consider that concept is not real, it's not rational. Because we committed to build affordable housing on this site. That's, that's why we used affordable housing funds to do it. And to move it off that site, that's, that's not feasible unless they're willing to make up that difference. And, and I haven't, in the last three years, I have not heard anything from any of the proponents of, uh, the Central Park Group. No one has called me, no one has emailed me. So I am not one of the city leaders that was con, is considered on this. So I'm very concerned that these concepts are being put forward when they're, they're not realistic. And I don't want this to come back later and have somebody suggest that, that the city was in mediation and agreed to these things because we never did, we were never in mediation. And unless they're willing to make us whole, uh, this isn't even a real concept. So I'm, I, I'll, I'll open it up to have some additional comments from the, uh, the council at this point.
So I, I would like to ask the city attorney, what would be required for this, uh, city to engage in mediation?
Before the city would engage in mediation, the city council would have to authorize that and authorize the city to participate. Absent that authorization, the city is not a party in those discussions. And one of the reasons for that is they have to establish what are the parameters for discussion. But that action has not taken place.
I don't hear a response and I see, uh, John's picture went away.
You didn't hear a response from Jason?
All right, so let's, so I provided a response. Was that heard by the city council? Or do we just lose the mayor? I'm trying to figure out where we're at in the process here.
No, I'm sorry, uh, I, I'm back here. And, uh, uh, there is a, uh, apparently one of the public had misunderstood the agenda and had indicated they wanted to comment on one item. And it turns out that they actually wanted to comment on a separate item. They wanted to comment on six point oh one and that they did not have the opportunity. So, uh, I will reopen the public hearing, uh, because there's apparently was some confusion. And I want to get all the public comments that I possibly can on this. Because we did hear so much public comment and I'm, I'm astonished that we haven't heard anything uh, from the public with this potentially being withdrawn. So with that, uh, I will, uh,
I've lost audio, so I, I don't know if you can hear me, but I can't hear anybody. I'll have to check what's happened here.
Can you hear me? Uh, Vice Mayor Warner, can you hear me? Oh, uh, Vice, uh, Councilor Carling?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I could hear Warner too, but.
Okay, cause I, I don't want to go back through all that over again. All right, so in that case, I'm going to hand this off to, uh, uh, the city clerk. She has comments, uh, that to be read into, uh, public comment. All right, thank you.
City Clerk's office, please read the email that was received.
This email came from Jean King. Says to be read at the meeting, uh, public comment item six oh one, resolution acknowledging the withdrawal of initiative measure. Bill, excuse me, Bill Dunlop, Chair Citizens for Livermore Central Park. In the interest of finding common ground and bringing the community together, the citizens of Livermore Central Park, excuse me, the citizens for a Livermore Central Park, sponsors of the Central Park Plan Initiative have sent a letter to the city formally withdrawing our initiative from the November ballot. We have also committed to not filing a lawsuit against the city of Livermore. We would like to thank the Livermore voters who signed the petition to place the Central Park Plan Initiative on the November ballot. The volunteers and every person who shared our vision. We are hopeful that we can continue positive discussions with all members of the community on how we can come together during these difficult times. And that's the end of the email.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. In that case, I will once again, uh, close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor Warner, you were, uh, are you back?
Uh, yeah, I can hear, I, you're, uh, the city attorney's answer, but I can, I'm back on, uh, I don't know what happened to my audio, but I got it restored.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, uh, for staff, any comments? Uh, Councilmember Monroe?
I have a comment, not a question, which is simply that, um, given the, uh, amount of rancor around this issue, the fact that we went from, um, an election, the, you know, the beginning of March, right into shelter in place, followed by the horrific murder of George Floyd, which has led to Black Lives Matter protests, which are much broader than that, but you know, that's, that's another discussion for matters initiated. I am so glad that we can put this behind us and that this is an area on which we can go forward. You know, looking honestly, I, I love our downtown. I love what it's going to be. But health and safety and the way we treat each other going forward and the way we take care of everybody, those are the things that really matter. And I'm grateful that this has been withdrawn. I hope we continue going forward, uh, together and that we focus on those things that really matter. So, yeah.
Vice Mayor Carling, comment?
No, I would agree with Councilmember Monroe. Let's, uh, let's move on.
All right, uh, well, I heard the, heard the city attorney say something that, that was, it was a nuance that, that I find very helpful. That what we are voting on is that we are not voting to take this off of the ballot. What we are doing, as I understand it, Mr. City Attorney, is that we are asking the, uh, register our voters to process the withdrawal. That we have received a letter asking that this be withdrawn and that we are asking them to process the withdrawal. We are not taking it off the ballot. They are going to be processing the letter to withdraw it.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. That is correct. The proponent is the one who made the decision to remove it from the, um, ballot. The city, uh, has an administrative responsibility under the elections code to process that. And one of the requirements is to prepare a new resolution that needs to go that Alameda County Register of Voters. And that's what we're requesting the council approve this evening.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's very clear that the city is not removing it from the ballot. What we are doing is we are asking the register our voters to process the removal or the withdrawal as initiated by the proponent. And I think that's what I just, what I just heard. So, okay, if that's, if that's the case, I'm, I'm good with that. Absolutely. Uh, any further discussion?
I'll, uh, I'll make the motion that we move to process the withdrawal. I'm, and just with respect to that, I'll say, I'm very glad it's over.
And I will second that.
Oh, darn.
Okay, it's been moved by, uh, Vice Mayor Warner, uh, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Uh, is there any discussion on that motion? I can't believe that after three years of battle, uh, and full-page ads, we're, we're finally through this. And hopefully the community is now going to come back together because, to be honest, we have much bigger issues to deal with than whether this hotel goes on the left side of the street or the right side of the street. We have far more important issues to deal with and I'd be more than happy to put this behind us. So with that, um, Madam City Clerk, if you'll, uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Another enthusiastic, yes.
Councilmember Coomer?
Aye.
Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn?
Aye. Thank you very much. This, uh, quite a battle.
I heard big sighs of relief all the way around there. That's great.
You did. And, and the fact that now we can start focusing on things that are much more important. And speaking of which, we are coming up to our goals and priorities. And I am astonished at the amount of work that we have been able to get done and that we continue to do in the face of a global pandemic and in the face of, of gut-wrenching, uh, atrocities of, uh, of outrage throughout this nation. So, um, I will hand off six point oh two. And as I said, I'm astonished at what we've been able to do. It just underscores the tremendous staff that we have here. And, and while I've got the floor, let me just continue for a moment. The reason that we're able to get this done is I have, I have emailed staff at ten thirty on a Sunday night. And at ten forty, I get a response. I, I, on, on a, a Wednesday night at eleven thirty at night, I was working on a document that I needed for the next day. And while I was watching it, that document was populated with the data that I needed at eleven thirty at night. This is what our staff is doing. They, if they aren't in the, uh, in the city hall, they're working from home and they don't stop working. They just keep working. And I, I can't say enough, uh, about what a great staff that we've got here because they're doing a remarkable job keeping this city going, uh, in a, uh, in the middle of a pandemic and everything else. So with that, I will hand this off to the city manager.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts. Uh, thank you very much for those kind words. The staff, uh, especially since we have declared the emergency, um, has been putting in enormous amount of time, continuing to move, um, all of the day-to-day items forward as well as, uh, work on the goals that the council adopted for this two-year period, as well as, um, respond to the emergency with a wide range of services and activities coordinating with, uh, national, state, uh, and county leaders on that. I'm going to have, um, our deputy city manager, Christine Martin, uh, lead us through, uh, the goals and priorities document where we're going to tell you essentially what we've gotten done in the last six-month period. One theme I'm going to, uh, I'm going to give you a little heads up about is not surprisingly, a, a number of the items that we're working on are going to take just a little bit longer because we have diverted significant resources, um, from, um, our normal activities to deal with the pandemic. So with that understanding, um, we still did, uh, get, uh, quite a bit done, uh, across the board on the items that you laid out for us as your goals. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Ms. Martin, um, to lead us through the item.
Uh, thank you, Mark. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. And tonight I'm pleased to present you with an update on your two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one council goals and priorities. As you know, uh, and Mark just mentioned, every two years, a council goals and priorities workshop is held to identify, discuss and prioritize key issues that will be addressed over a two-year period. Based on your direction at that workshop, a report outlining goals and priorities, including a list of action items is brought back to council for consideration with the two-year budget adoption process. So last year on April twenty-second, council approved five core goals and priorities. Those are asset management, downtown, emergency management and public safety, encourage an innovation-driven economy, homelessness and affordable housing. Each of those five goals and priorities have an associated work plan with specific action items identified to accomplish the goal. Updates on implementation of the goals like the one this evening are presented to the city council twice a year. The update this evening, as Mark alluded to, reflects the impacts of the declaration of a local statewide and national state of emergency back in March. This has diverted resources and slowed implementation on the work programs. However, as shown in the attachment to your staff report provided in the packet this evening, progress has been made on each and every goal. I will highlight just a few of the completed actions. The entire detail is found in that attachment in your packet this evening. For the first goal, asset management, I'll just remind you that the objective of that goal is to establish a comprehensive asset management program, ensuring the community continues to receive vital services through a sustainable infrastructure strategy. Early this year, the Community Asset Management Committee, or CAM, as they're referred to, underwent a rules of procedures, uh, change. They were, uh, reviewed and updated and a recruitment for that, uh, committee was also processed. I, also this year, early this year, a consultant was selected to work with staff and the CAM committee to develop a community engagement plan for asset management moving forward. For your second goal, the downtown, the objective there is to enhance the city's vibrancy by For your second goal, the downtown, the objective there is to enhance the city's vibrancy by completing critical projects downtown, ensuring the right balance of local amenities to support quality of life. And on this goal, since the last update, Stockman's Park has been put under construction and in fact is nearing completion. The park should be open to the public later this summer. Also on this goal, a disposition and development agreement for the Science and Society Center, now known as Quest Science Center, was approved early this year. And Livermoreum Plaza Design Concept was approved by council late last year. On your third goal, emergency management and public safety, the objective there is to establish a comprehensive emergency management program, ensuring staff and community readiness, and expand the use of technology to enhance public safety. On that goal, work has continued towards the middle for an accreditation through the Emergency Management Accreditation Program. Also, a community outreach campaign on emergency preparedness was completed. That included posters in downtown kiosks, community presentations at the Civic Center Library, outreach at farmers markets, and social media messaging. On public safety, six new automated license plate reader cameras were installed since the last update for a total now of 24 around the city's perimeter. Also, progress is happening on constructing the real-time awareness facility. We have included upgrades to the network security firewall and installed cameras, server storage and equipment in preparation for that facility. On your fourth goal, encourage an innovation-driven economy, that objective is to encourage an innovation-driven economy that supports revenue-generating businesses, high-quality jobs, entrepreneurs, and unique experiences for residents and visitors. On this goal, council approved a comprehensive strategic plan back in October. And while COVID-19 has prevented the festival component of the 2020 mural festival, three of the eight new murals downtown are complete and others will soon follow. On your fifth and final goal, which is homelessness and affordable housing, the objective there is to establish a homelessness strategy, engaging local partners to develop a coordinated response and expand diversity of affordable housing opportunities. And on this goal, the Council Subcommittee on Homelessness was able to hold a community meeting, the first of its community meetings on medium-term strategies back in March before the COVID emergency hit. The Avance Project, formerly known as Sunflower Hill, received County Measure A1 Affordable Housing Bond Funds and secured project-based vouchers necessary to apply for tax credit financing. And also, the project entitlements were approved just last month for the Vineyard Project. So as I mentioned, these are just a few of the action items completed since our last update. And while the COVID-19 emergency has slowed progress, diverted resources, and pushed out milestones, you can see that work is progressing on each of the council goals. And this concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open the public comment period. Is there any public comment? And a city clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there is. City Clerk's office, please read the public comments from Zoom.
This comment comes from Dylan and Erica. Item six point oh two. Our question concerns the proclamation of Safety Awareness Month, as well as the two-year financial plan. We think that the city would benefit from diverting some future funds from the 32% currently dedicated towards policing to other community initiatives that are proven to be more affordable and more effective, including mental health organizations. We also think that the wording of our current police policies is not strong enough to meet the campaign zero standards. De-escalation of violence is necessary, not something the officers should consider. And then we also have a comment from Brittany Kick. Can you please consider adding a community lead advisor, excuse me, can you consider adding a community lead police advisory committee as a priority for our city as well as an equity advisor committee led by community as a priority item for our city?
Any further comments?
That, yeah.
Anything from Zoom?
That concludes our comments from Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, anything from YouTube?
No comments have been received over YouTube.
Okay, very good. I'll bring it back to the council. A couple of questions there. Those are more budgetary questions than because we did set public safety as one of our top priorities, and that's been reaffirmed by outreach to our public. Any comment from staff?
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. Yes, you did just adopt your budget for the remaining year. Traditionally, the council ultimately adopts its new goals with the election of the new council. The next time you would be adopting your new goals would be in February after the completion of this goal cycle. So that is certainly something that can be considered at that time. And I think some of the other items that were related to items that may ultimately be considered as far as the mayor's pledge, which you mentioned earlier that you had taken. So I believe that those items can certainly be integrated into our approach here as we're moving forward.
Thank you. Just wanted to make a point. There was a question I meant to ask, answer for Brittany Kick. She had talked about benefits for the council that the city council should consider adding benefits. We actually, several years ago, took the compensation and put that in the hands of the voters. So any increase in compensation like public health benefits or personal health benefits, that would have to go to a vote of the public. And any raise, we actually have not gotten a raise on the council since 2007. But we, when I became mayor, we put compensation into the hands of the voters. So if there's ever an increase greater than 5%, that has to go to the voters. As I said, we have not raised the council compensation since 2007. Okay, with that, any further, but customer, Vice Mayor Warner?
A couple of things, and I get just on what you just last mentioned. What we did was the raises are limited by state law, and so what we did was two things. One is we said, whereas state law allows the raises to be saved over a number of years, so you cannot do it. And then if you didn't do it for 10 years and the max in state law was 5%, say you could give yourself a 50% raise. And what we did was say, if you don't use it in a year, you've lost it. So you can't compound it like some cities. That was one aspect of it. And the other thing is that state law allowed, I believe, a 5% a raise max. And what we did in the initiative that we put out there was for the voters, as you pointed out, was say that the raise would, could be no larger than the rate of inflation or that 5%, whichever was smaller. That's with respect to the raises. So, and we haven't been inclined to do that. And then you're absolutely right that with respect to the benefits, we made sure that they could not be granted at the whim of a council. They were put in at the whim of a council. And we took them out as the council, but then to make sure that this was something that the voters were for, we put that initiative on the ballot to make sure that they could not be reinstated without a vote. So that's kind of where we're at. I appreciate the, the comment that what we have potentially disadvantages people, but in order to change it, we're now, I've got to go to an initiative to make that happen. Then the, so there was that. And then the, if I could go back then to the asset management. The, it strikes me that what I think I've heard is our normal schedule, or not, essentially, these goals and priorities, is that our normal schedule would put it in February, but I believe that some of the events that Councilmember Monroe mentioned and that we're all very well aware of in some of the public comment. These are dramatic sea changes in what we're facing and what our priorities might be. So the question I have, would it be possible for us to advance that new, I mean, the, the goals and priorities? Now, I know it normally happens when we get a new council, and we're going to get a new council, but I'm just thinking that perhaps we should look at what we're, what we have as our goals and priorities and decide if, with the time remaining before the next February, if there's anything substantive that we should do. And, and I would, this is sort of a question for the city manager. Is that at all practical to think about that?
So I think the, it is possible to do what you have said, but it is not necessary if the council wishes to give the staff direction, for example, on a new work program or priority. You don't formally have to amend your goals. So from that perspective, I think what would be clear to staff is that you lay out the goals that you'd like to achieve, and then allow us to bring a work program back to you to adopt that. And that can either be integrated into your formal goals or standalone because we have used both of those ways to ultimately accomplish large work projects. But the fact that you've already adopted your goals doesn't preclude you from essentially redeploying resources to deal with, you know, necessary changes. So I think the, the, the most important thing for your staff is that, that the process be started, that you give some clarity on what the goal is that you'd like us to work on and bring back a work program, and we can do that for you.
Okay, so just to be, make sure I understood it. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that various things are going to be brought up in matters initiated. I was just trying to make clear that if we do something major, we're going to be redirecting and that we're, you know, you'll be coming back with, if we want to start something else or have a different emphasis, but you'll make it clear which is being de-emphasized because we're not going to be able to add something without you subtracting something.
That's exactly right. And that's why developing a work program would allow us to estimate the resources necessary. And then we could, at the same time, note the things that we wouldn't be making progress on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Customer Carling?
I just wanted to thank Christine and the staff for very comprehensive report, and I, I think we should all be proud of the progress we've made, even with some of the challenges that we've been facing as a community, as a state, as a nation in the world. I, I think it's still remarkable that we've gotten as much work accomplished and as we have. And I just wanted to thank her and the team for the report this evening. So thank you.
Mr. Monroe?
And, yeah, beat me to it. Absolutely. I'm looking down the longer report and looking at the checkmarks of, you know, what's been accomplished. And I, I know how much the pandemic has, I don't know. I have heard tell how much the pandemic has affected the ability, not the ability, but the workload of the staff and a different work environment as fits us all. I, I am in awe of the work that's, that's, that's being done and that we are proceeding to go forward, particularly in the face of so much that's unknown. So.
All right. And any other comments? All right. Well, I will tell you, if, if you want to feel uplifted, take a walk down Second Street, past the California Water Service Building, past the Way Up Art in Frame, and now the old Theater Mall. There are a series of murals that are going up that are absolutely spectacular. The one at Way Up Art in Frame with this phenomenal parrot flying through the word hope. And that's something that we all desperately need right now is hope. And the murals, Trent Thompson was the one that orchestrated the, the mural project. And these are coming into our town at just the right time. It is very uplifting. They are absolutely beautiful. And I encourage everybody to go down there and take a look because it's, it's something very special. And there's going to be several more that are going to be coming online. So, so look for all of those. So again, tremendous effort for the staff. What a great job that you've all done. Sincerely appreciate it. Okay, so this just is there a motion on this one? Do we first accept this?
You do not need to take any action on this.
Okay, very good. Well, again, fantastic. Well done. Moving on to next item is the appointment of council members to the city council Subcommittee on Advisory Bodies. This is the committee that appoints to, or actually we interview the candidates and then make recommendations for the council. So there's a standard rotation here and everybody kind of moves up. So with that, I would appoint Councilmember Carling and myself, if that bring the, the team back together again.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Well, very good. Well, in that case, I will appoint Councilmember Carling and myself to the Subcommittee. And with that, moving on to six point oh four, which is the ratification of the emergency order. This is the regarding the temporary moratorium on residential and commercial evictions due to the loss of income, increased medical expenses, or childcare needs related to COVID-19. I know that we've all received several letters on this that are all part of the public record. So I'll hand this over to staff.
Honorable Mayor, I'm Mark Roberts, your city manager. On March 13th, 2020, I, acting as your Director of Emergency Services, declared a local emergency. On March 16th of 2020, the city council ratified that declaration of local emergency. Local emergency was based on the worldwide pandemic and the first community spread within Alameda County of the disease. As you know, Alameda County now leads all of the Bay Area counties in the total number of cases and continues the process of slowly opening the community back up and the county back up, but faces a number of challenges in doing that as the case load has not dropped as sharply as in surrounding counties. On March 25th, I issued an order for temporary moratorium on residential and commercial evictions. On April 2nd, I issued the First Amendment to that order to maintain consistency between that order and the county's ordinance, which had been recently passed, and the governor's executive order. Substantially, the amendment expanded the eligibility requirements to match the county's ordinance. On April 13th, on the city council, adopted a resolution ratifying that first amended order. On April 28th, Alameda County Board of Supervisors adopted an urgency ordinance suspending residential evictions for any reason with limited exceptions during the period of the local health emergency. On May 5th, I issued a Second Amendment to my order to align with the county's eviction moratorium ordinance that was approved by the Board of Supervisors on April 28th. As is required, this item now is before the city council to confirm the declaration and the issuance of that Second Amendment that I made on May 5th. And with that, your staff does recommend that you adopt the resolution in your packet, adopting the Second amended order by the Director of Emergency Services. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Questions for staff at this point? Yes, Sir Monroe?
Just the letters and the comments we've gotten from the storage, those, those people, the owners of the storage units, that does seem to be a somewhat separate case. Is there a path forward which would allow them to, given that people don't live in storage units and can abandon them, is there a way that we can make some, carve out some sort of an exemption there?
So for, for the legal analysis, I'll, I'll hand it off to your city attorney, but there are a couple of very specific issues that they were discussing, one of which had to do with when someone abandons items within a storage unit. And their question was that their belief was that this would not, order would not apply to things that had been abandoned. And there is a process for dealing with whether an order applies to you or not. And that is to essentially send information to the city describing the specifics. Describing the specifics of the, the business question. And then we can issue a letter back to them. And we've done that with a number of businesses. Where the question was whether their operations or their operations as amended complied with the order. In a case where it's not simply non-payment, but a tenant has abandoned assets within a storage unit. And a good faith effort has been made and evidence is presented to us. Those issues can be dealt with and they are not inconsistent with this order. On the larger issue of whether the order applies to many storage, I'm going to turn that over to Jason McCall, your city attorney.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is Jason McCall, your city attorney. We have received the letter and we're in the process of preparing a response to that. The city's order was based on the governor's order and twenty eight twenty. As well as the two amendments that came to that order subsequently and thirty seven twenty, most recently and sixty six twenty. Which gave authority to local agencies to adopt local measures to protect those. Commercial and residential tenants that might be affected as a result of COVID for loss of income. Those restrictions are still in place. In order to benefit from the moratorium. A occupant tenant residential commercial would need to demonstrate that they were affected by COVID, which is why. They've been unable to pay and that's what resulted in their particular situation. We are preparing a response to the letter. We will hopefully try and get that out this week to articulate our position and the scope of the order. We'll, again, we'll get that out soon as well as it's important to note that. The county has also adopted its own eviction and moratorium ordinances. And is again looking to revisit that. So we may be back before you once again. Should the Director of Emergency Services need to amend this order even further.
Okay, thank you. There, we had received letters from individuals that had, they. Lost their, their home and had stored everything in storage containers. And then had lost income. So in effect, it was an eviction. So it's, it's a. Interesting balance, a difficult balance between. Whether it's abandoned property or whether it's lack of ability to pay. And I think that. The city attorney just outlined the difference in, in what someone could do in both cases. I saw a question over here. Customer Cumber.
Yeah, and that was my question is, will, will we find a way to? Given what, if we move forward tonight, to, to make sure that abandonment of property isn't considered as part of. The loss of income of an individual. I don't know how we separate that quite honestly, but I think. For the sake of the facility, we probably have to make some kind of a. Notation that somebody walks away from their stuff. It's, uh, you know, it's a different circumstance.
Right, but if they, if they've actually filed an appeal, then it shows that they, they haven't abandoned. So again.
Exactly. No, you're right. I would agree.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Vice Mayor Warner.
Uh, just one thing, I, it's, I think it would be good to be able to quantify the size of the problem. I agree that we need to make this distinction, but I would be interested, should we go down the process of. People being able to determine the difference between abandonment and inability to pay. That we keep track of the numbers. Just so we know what, what's going on.
Absolutely. When we make a determination like that, we do keep track of those individual determinations.
Well, and I guess what I'm saying is, is make us aware of the numbers as well.
Very good.
Okay, we have a public comment.
City Clerk's Office, please read the public comments received over Zoom.
This comment is from Chris Skinnell. Dear Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council, my name is Chris Skinnell and I am a partner at the law firm of Nielsen. Merximer, Coronello, Gross and Leoni. I write again on behalf of the National Self-Storage Association, which represents the owners and operators of self-storage businesses nationally. Including in California, to ask that you vote to override order number twenty dash three point two. Issued on May fifth by the city manager, Director of Emergency Services. At least insofar as that purports to ban lean sales, limit physical access and prohibit the service of late notices. For non-payment to self-storage facility when the failure to pay is supposedly. attributable to a significant reduction in income or increased costs attributable to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Or the government's response thereto. As discussed more fully in my letter to you dated May fourteenth, which is not attached to the agenda or acknowledged in the staff report. Which I am attaching to this comment for inclusion in the record. This provision conflicts with the California Self-Storage Facility Act, CSSFA. Business of Profession Code, Section twenty one, seven oh one. That statute preempts this provision of the order and the city's emergency powers do not permit it to disregard controlling state law. Nor do any of the government, governor's executive orders authorize local governments to ignore the lean sale provisions of the CSS. FA. Additionally, this provision of the order violates numerous federal and state constitutional protection. Including the contracts clause, the takings clause and due process. It represents a significant impairment on the rights of the SSA's members that is vastly disproportionate to the goal to be served. This disproportion flows from the facts that. The desire to protect self-storage customers is not remotely on par with protecting individuals and families from homelessness and businesses from bankruptcy. Self-storage leases are month to month and the CSSFA affords delinquent customers an opportunity to prevent. The sale by removing their property anytime if they are no longer able to afford the cost. There has not been anything like a rash of lean sales over the past couple of months, like operators everywhere. Excuse me, like operators elsewhere, those in Livermore have taken proactive, sympathetic and reasonable measures to assist their customers during these times. And finally, any lean sales that could have occurred as of the date of the director's order would have been based on failure to pay in December and January or earlier. Which cannot reasonably be attributed to COVID nineteen. For nearly forty years, the CSSFA has regulated self-storage relationships. Reflecting the legislature's careful balancing of operators' rights against customers. The order unnecessarily disrupts this balance without substantial reason to do so. We therefore ask that rather than rubber stamp the order as staff requests, you take this opportunity to excise the portion that illegally seeks to prohibit. Lean sales under the CSSFA. Bring it into compliance with state law and protect the constitutional rights of the operators to the courts. So the courts don't have to. Thank you. And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Any comments on YouTube?
No comments have been received on YouTube.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to close the public comment period. Bring it back to the council. Question for the city attorney.
So again, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. We are aware of Mr. Skinnell's letter. And as well as his comments today, and we're preparing to respond them. We do disagree with their assessment. We do not see a constitutional issue here. We do believe the governor's order did delegate the authority to prevent the ejection of commercial as well as. Residential occupants. The orders were not narrow. They were actually very broad to maintain the status quo of those individuals who are affected by COVID. It preserves the contractual rights and any obligations to pay. It just maintains the status quo during the time of the emergency. And which can be addressed afterward. We will prepare our response and send it over to Mr. Skinnell and his law firm. At that point, we can engage them and determine whether we can find some common ground. And if not, at least we've framed the issue for resolution.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any, customer Carling?
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Alcala, are other cities facing the same? Issue that, uh, Mr. Skinnell is bringing up, or are we unique? In the state somehow?
I cannot speak to that particular issue. What I can speak to is why this issue was brought to the attention of the Director of Emergency Services. The director was advised that there were tenants in. Storage unit situations where they were storing their commercial equipment for their businesses and they were being threatened with ejection. And this, there was a question of whether that was within the scope of the governor's order to protect those particular individuals. And the director believed that that was the case and so acted.
So how big is this issue? Do you know? I mean, are we talking about dozens and dozens of people doing this or? Less than five?
I can't speak to the particular scope of this situation. I know our director of. Innovation Economic Development as well as the city manager where information is brought to their attention. I don't know if they've got additional information to provide inside.
So Mark Roberts, your city manager, we do believe that the, uh, that the item is relatively limited, but I do not have data. The, um, the Owners Association has not provided a number of particular units that were impacted. They noted that they believe that the order should not apply to them, but they did not provide data behind how many. Sales would be disrupted by this order.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, any further questions or comments? Okay, uh, yes. Are you willing to make a motion?
Sure, so move.
Staff recommendation, right? Okay, uh, is there a second? Uh, it looks like Vice Mayor Warner seconds. Okay, uh, he came up there. Uh, okay, any further discussion of the motion?
I, 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 I just, I just want to reiterate the, um, concern. I, I, I understand the need to balance. You know, this, this balance between. The concern for the, with the self-storage folk. And, and, um, the, the people who are storing. I just want to make really sure that we are distinguishing between people who, you know, if it's actually been abandoned. The person's gone, the property's gone, but I just want to make sure that, that as this goes forward, that really is established in one way or another. So, does that make sense?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, with that, uh, Madam City Clerk. We'll call.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Cumber.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Warner.
Mayor Marshawn.
Okay, thank you all very much. Now moving to, uh. Let's see. Report outs and matters initiative. Let's change it up a little bit. Let's go with, uh, customer Carling first. Customer Carling.
Hey, well, thank you.
Feedoff hitter.
Okay. On May twenty seventh, I did a Zoom meeting with Stop Waste. I'll have to acknowledge, uh, Altamont Creek has been very active in looking at. Ways to, uh. Recycle, not reuse, but recycle or share, uh, food. Uh, with their students and actually it's been remarkable in the amount of savings of food that. Uh, doesn't end up in the landfill. And so they've, they've had a grant. To look at this Oakland, Oakland School District is the other. One in Alameda County that's been doing this, but there was a nice report out. And kudos to, uh, Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District and, and specifically Altamont Creek. Several of us, uh, the mayor and Councilmember Monroe participated in a couple of protest rallies. Earlier this week. And in that regard, I wanted to, um. Talk about a matters initiated night. Uh, and this is around what's been going on in the country. And frankly, uh, even in Europe, other parts of the world. Uh, as a result of what happened in Minneapolis a week or so ago. I wanted to start by saying that, you know, I, I don't have any reservations about our. Local police department. I think they do, uh, a, a great job and. Some of you know, I had an occasion to call upon their services here about a month ago. And they responded very professionally and very quickly to help me out in a situation. So. Um, I don't mean, uh, and I have complete confidence in our police chief and his team. But I do think that in light of the protests that we've seen in the rallies, I think we should consider. Undertaking what President Obama suggested and has challenged, and that is to review. Policies, procedures and culture of the LPD. And report back not only to council, but to conduct an open dialogue with the community as well. Thank Brittany Kick brought it up a couple of different times. Tonight in terms of involving the community. So somehow, I'd like to ask staff to see what we could do to, uh. To look at, uh, again, the policies, procedures and cultures. How we could not only involve us, us as council, but also the community as well. And looking for areas of improvement and the ability to track accountability. So that, that's one thing that I would like to see. And then I have another people to agree with, with that.
We, it's on our head.
Well, as, 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 as you heard me say on Thursday that I have sworn onto the mayor's pledge. Which involves reviewing and, uh, reporting back out to the community and getting. A broad scope of feedback.
I know you have, but I think it's incumbent upon the five of us to also sign onto that. Whether you can, whether we can do it formally or not, like the way you did it, but I think we all need to stand up. And, uh, share with you that commitment.
And I think it's important that, that all of you, I think, I, it is important that all of you stand, we all stand together. So thank you for that commitment.
The other thing that I'd like, and I, I'm not suggesting we do this. Just yet, because I think the first item I talked about is a priority, but I do think that. One of the things that folks talked about are the biases that we all, all have. When they may all be different. Certainly, as individuals, we all have different biases. And prejudice in a variety of different ways, but I think that we, as city leaders, should be looking at. How we conduct ourselves, not only. And including the city staff for that matter, but you know, are we looking for? Including everybody in terms of hiring practices? Are we looking for how we reach out to communities? That we, that often don't participate in, say, the advisory boards. So are there ways that we as a sec council or as a city can begin to, um. To encourage other participations beyond the sort of the folks that, that we generally see. Applying for our jobs. Wanting to serve in advisory boards or advisory or in commissions. I'd like to explore that at some future time as to how we could, how we need to think about that, how we could change our behavior. Our thinking around that. And it isn't just about the police department and, and. And which is the most important thing at the moment.
Very good. Honorable Mayor, with your permission, if I can get a little clarification, especially on that first item. So. The first, first item is, my assumption is that, that, that the item generally described by Councilmember Carling. Which was, uh, to review, uh, report back, uh, conduct a dialogue with the community. Dealing with policies, procedures, uh, culture and practices, uh, within the police department. And look for areas of improvement. And then develop a system to allow tracking, uh, for. The overall, uh, process and project that we have consensus from the council that that's something that we want to pursue.
Shouldn't just make sure I understand.
Certainly.
So I'm supportive. I nodded yes for what Councilmember Carling was saying. I, my impression. Of what we're about to embark on is first for you to come back with even how to do it. Rather than to do it and then give us a report. I think, uh, we should start with the how. I mean, what is, we, we talk about the, uh. Policies, the practices and the culture and some other aspects of this, but I would, I would suggest that. My interpretation of what I was shaking, shaking my head yes to was. You'll come back with how to do this first. You know, exactly what do you think you heard and then how are we going to do it? And the other thing that I would add to this is that we think about how to. Work with the other cities, our neighbors in particular, to make sure we're consistent and perhaps. We could share some resources in this evaluation.
So Vice Mayor, um, yes, my first step here was to act. So Vice Mayor, yes, my first step here was to actually try and say out loud what I think I heard. And then the second step that I was going to do is suggest that we work on a process and program and bring that back for your consideration to see whether we got that right. And that you can review essentially the process that we lay out to accomplish this. And if there are adjustments or changes that are appropriate, that you can direct those changes. And then we will have clear direction as to what our task is, how and who we are involving in that process, and set expectations for a timeline and work products that would ultimately be developed. What we're talking about here is not an inconsequential examination. And it actually will take some time and effort, dialogues with the community, as you all are very aware, take time and and effort and outreach to do, especially if we're looking in particular to include groups that traditionally haven't flocked to a city government to give us their input. So that's why we want to lay out essentially what we think we heard and what the expectations are and what the goals of that process are, and make certain that we understand what your direction is before we we start a process that will include some time and effort.
Right, so I could say, I mean, you know, one of the other big experiences we had was on the downtown where we had the outreach, and this is way more important in my mind. And I think the other thing for the to emphasize for the people that might be tuning into the way council meetings and county government process works, that when you come back with the suggestions on exactly what we're going to try and achieve and how, that it's not just our direction that you get back, but it'll be a very public process, even on that first step.
Yes, that that's very important that that we lay out essentially a framework for next steps and allow the public to review and comment on that for you to absorb that direction from the public and translate that into policy direction for us.
I think the frustration for some of the community, though, is is, you know, how long does all this take? I mean, admittedly, the wheels of government move slowly, but it how quickly do you think you can come back with a draft of a plan? Let me call it that.
Can I jump in? And at some point, we're probably going to get called on having a discussion. But I'm wondering if, you know, given that, we can actually take, recognizing the time, you know, government's slow, all that, perhaps we can just move, you know, have and put this on the agenda for the next meeting and have a discussion about this scope and and that we really want to direct you to. I I would have taken this, made this a little more broad, beyond the police, and just talk about the structural issues in general, which would include, you know, how we think about this, you know, maybe working with the school district in in some other areas. So I might have gone more broad than less broad. But I think that's probably a discussion that we'd have to have, you know, not during matters initiated.
So I I think councilmember Carling and councilmember Monroe both illustrated the complexity of the issue. And I think that we probably ultimately have several different work programs here. There's some that are shorter term, you know, because I think the first step of this is for us to work to help the community understand what the policies in place are. The next is examining essentially what best practices are from a variety of sources. We've heard about a few in particular that people have found helpful. But there is a body of knowledge out there on that. The larger question of that involves the community, the school district, other agencies, a broad swath of members in the community is a is a larger issue. And in response to your question, councilmember Carling, the more fundamental the change, the the longer that takes. So perhaps like we have on some other large and complex problems, we might want to break some of our action items down into short-term and longer-term objectives. Because some of the shorter-term things could be relatively easy to implement. At the same time, and you all are aware of this, is the national and state landscape is changing. The laws and requirements that our police department must implement, that groundwork is changing. And in fact, a more useful community dialogue might happen once we have a better idea of what changes are going to be mandated from the state and how do we leverage off of those and make the most of those opportunities? And so if indeed something's going to be required, spending an enormous amount of time on that particular issue probably would be best to divert to other items that are on the list here. So we have two competing objectives here. One is a broader discussion from the council before we start to craft a plan. That's one option for us to try and do a draft plan. I would guess that we are at the first meeting in July for a draft outline of the plan to be back before you. If the council wished to have a discussion in between at the second meeting in June to provide some further guidance, those are, while that sounds like a really long time, and I know that's very frustrating, that's extraordinarily quick, given the fact that for most of that time, this information will actually be published and out in the community. So the time that your staff has to work on this to get something back to you is quite compact. We want to, we want to move quickly, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're doing the job that you expect us to get done here. So with that, perhaps is it the council's pleasure that we do want to have a discussion item that would not essentially have staff work, that would be just a broad discussion item related to this to begin to help us with the scope of the work program and then bring the work program back at a following meeting?
It might, I think that's where the sense that I get is let's figure out what this is going to be before we send you off to go do it.
Very good.
Yeah, I think it's I think time is of the essence as much as anything. I mean, these are pretty raw topics these days. And I think we need to show that we've been listening. And even though we can't have meaning, we don't have meaning more than every couple of weeks. And as I said, the wheels of government move slowly. I do think the sooner the better, at least to have a discussion so that the public at least has some awareness that we're taking this seriously and we're going to think about how to to move forward. I think there's also a fair amount of misinformation out there. I think John spoke to it at the rally on Thursday. And so I don't know, maybe it's just worth at the next meeting without, I don't think it'd be a lot of work. The chief could just go over. In fact, I think he just published this, didn't he, in one of his communications that came out yesterday, I think. I mean, he could just review that for us as a place to start, I think. I mean, and to the eight, eight can't wait and just talk to each of those issues. I mean, I don't think that would require a lot of time, I don't think. Maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong.
So councilmember Carling, you are correct. The police department is putting out a series of information, one a day, diving deeper into some of the topics there. And we could certainly bring those items, both publish them in the agenda packets. Would be another avenue for people to actually be able to read and see those and to have some discussion about that. And while the focus obviously is on one particular tool and measure, and I think we want to talk about that one. We do want to make sure that the conversation is broader. You know, the the checklist format for improvement is has some tremendous advantages, but also some tremendous disadvantages as well, as it doesn't ultimately change culture interactions as profoundly as some other items. But they're all important pieces.
So of course, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking about is that people people communicate and get their information lots and lots of different ways. And I think it's great that the police chief is putting out these messages. But again, I think this city council meetings and frankly, the opportunity for us, the five of us, to talk about it as a body, I think, just provides another avenue for people to hear what we have to say and what we're thinking about. And again, it's another way of providing information to the public that doesn't come out on Nextdoor or an email.
So with the permission of the council, we would bring back some of the information that we've already put out publicly. We would bundle that, and that would be a jumping off place for the council to hear from the community and then give us direction on the items in particular that you'd like us to address with a work program and that we would bring that work program back again for review by the community and comment and direction by the council at a subsequent meeting. So at the next meeting, we would have an open discussion where you give us direction. At a subsequent meeting, we would bring back a draft plan for your review. Is is that the consensus that I'm getting from the council here at this point?
I had one more thing to that. I can just build on it. Because I agree that there's this sense of urgency. And I think the the first thing is that we convey that we've actually heard that black lives matter. And, you know, we can refine what that means. But the thing is, there are people dying. And so there is a sense of urgency here, and people very uncomfortable, right? So there's that. Then there's the thing that, well, we we understand what the issue is. We want to do something about it. But to actually do something substantive and at these deep levels of culture is going to take a while. So there's that, there's that whole spectrum. I mean, what we're dealing with is hundreds of years of issue, right? And you're not going to fix it in a week.
Yeah.
So if we, just as long as we all first receive, we've heard and we know the pain. We want to do something about it, and it's going to take us a while to do it. And we're going to do it in a very public way and engage in people. I think that's what we want to be able to convey here. And it's, we need a pragmatic understanding of the scope of what we're dealing with. And to really have substantive change, it's going to be hard, but we're going to work it.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks, Bob.
Yeah. Yes. Sorry, I I had something I was going to say. It's gone now. You you said it very well, Bob. Both Bobs.
Right, very good. And and just to Mr. Carling's point, when you had suggested you're thinking out loud, how good of a job are we doing currently? And I'm not going to speak for the entire organization. But when we were out there at the demonstration, and and don't worry, to my city attorney, I'm not going to, I'm not, we're not really discussing here. I can see your pictures are twitching. But when you look at the the young people that were out there at the demonstration on Tuesday, on Thursday, and there were a number of young people out at the the flagpole today. If you look at our Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, that is a wonderfully diverse commission. And there were several of the members were out at the demonstrations on on Tuesday and Thursday. So I looked to them, and there's hope there because there is great diversity and there's a lot of energy. So there are young leaders that are coming up. I have great, great hope for them.
And and I did, it did come back to me, and that is simply how do we keep people involved? I am concerned. So I I believe that we need to, because this is so important, we need to take our time, we need to do it right. We need to do it publicly, and that's what the discussion we've had. And we know that attention spans are short. Honestly, I'm a little disappointed that we don't have more people attending this meeting, at least apparently so. Because this is where the discuss, this is the discussion that they wanted to hear happen. Yeah, this is the pre-discussion to the discussion.
Wait for the discussion. There'll be more people in the discussion.
Yeah. So understanding that words are heard, they are acted on, but they're acted on, you know, you 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 can't make it happen immediately. It does have to happen. And the more important it is, the more consequential it is, the more you want to do it right. And that actually doesn't happen quickly. So I I I hope we can, we can convey that to to particularly the youth in the in the in the city.
Customer Carling, are you finished?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Okay, let me go to councilmember Coomer.
Well, today was a live to meeting, and it was a kind of a long one after missing one. We had a long meeting with some ugly numbers regarding ridership being down over ninety percent and revenues vastly falling off. And I think we're making a pretty good, you know, pretty good move to to balance things at the at the administrative level. They're doing a pretty good job at keeping things together there, which is good to see. But they, we we discussed a plan today to start reopening again. You know, when the time comes and, you know, the best, worst, and most likely case scenarios is we spent some time on a a very informative PowerPoint on that part. So that was a big time thing. But that was really the only thing I've got is besides hospital stays, it's been a little sparse for me lately. So it's just, it's good to be back informed today. And I have no matters to initiate. I will get to what the previous discussion was all about. I think is, you know, as I think I'm the only one of us five who's an ex-police officer and and have enough to offer, I think on that point of view, just to offer some counterpoints.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Monroe.
All right, so I will start off with two two meetings. So the the situation that with the murder of George Fleury, I'm sorry, Floyd, and, you know, the resultant demonstrations and support for Black Lives Matters has, I I've been kind of astonished at the, how that has affected every single meeting I've been to, including June fourth, when I went by Zoom to the Transportation, Communications, and Public Works Policy Committee meeting of the of the League of California Cities, where that was the focus of a good part of the meeting. There were other things that were on the that were on the agenda that matter as well, which were, because it ties together, economics ties together with systemic racism ties in with economic inequality. One of the big items on on the agenda here was presentation on mobility and communications that is broadband in rural areas and other underserved areas by broadband, and how important this is in addressing the digital divide. And so there's some ways to go forward with that, including using hotspots in a in a meaningful way. So I think that's something that we maybe can can look at as a city. I'm not bringing that forward as a matters initiated, just saying that that's one of the items on the table for to to consider and, you know, to to think about how that that works. So that was, that was one area that it was interesting to see these these issues coming together. And also how how much broadband and how much healing the digital divide is becoming considered, you know, truly just part of the infrastructure that we we all have to live with. And then the second is, I actually on June third, went to the LCAC meeting where the discussion was how do we go forward and using the arts as a way to deal with some of these inequities? So both of those were interesting. I was, I I don't, I spent a good deal of the day trying to figure out what I wanted to say about going forward as a city in light of Black Lives Matter, in light of the requests we've had for eight can't wait. By the way, I was that organization has taken the our updated work, our updated policy, and it looks like they've upgraded us a little bit. And I think that we're working on reconciling the two. Is that is that correct, city, Mr. City Manager? Mr. Roberts?
Yes, and in fact, that's why some of them, the longer information that's being presented on a daily basis is particularly helpful to give both context and to give a jumping off place for some discussions. to give both context and to give a jumping off place for some discussions.
Yeah. So I, as, as a sociologist, you know, I've can speak the language of structural racism and I can speak the language of white privilege. And I can speak the, you know, and what that means. And so I spent a long time writing it up and sort of soc talk. And then I threw it all out because it's not actually particularly helpful. What I, what I want to do is, is simply say that as we go forward as Vice Mayor Warner and Councilmember Carling have suggested in, in moving forward in the, in the larger issues with the city, you know, making this a larger discussion with the city, I think this absolutely needs to happen. I wanted to quote from Mr. Yarborough's letter, which was submitted because he suggests that some of the questions we consider are, how do we support people of color in our community? What kind of strategic plan can we build with community stakeholders? I think that that's come forward. What are our local policies on ending police brutality? I actually think a better way to frame, frame that in Livermore would be, well, anywhere is how do we support a culture of public safety? Where does public safety come from? Who is responsible for it? Is it only the police? Is it building up social services? What are those balances? How do we all work together on that? What are we teaching about race and culture in our schools? That's not our, you know, how do we counsel work with schools? What, and I know that the schools have addressed that. And how do we plan on helping the fight to end racial discrimination and systemic oppression? And how can we be actively anti racist instead of simply not racist? So some of these are questions we can address. Some of these are questions of culture with the city as a whole. Is there a formal way that we as a council can address, can adopt the mayor's pledge? Or is this just something that happens from mayor to mayor? Any, any thoughts on that? I, I know that others, others have raised that. If the way to do it, it seems like it would be a good idea. I'm sorry, I, I was planning on being way more articulate, but this is not one of those things where it's too much to say. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Monroe. Council, Vice Mayor Warner.
Sorry, I had to unmute. I, like Councilmember Coomer, I attended the Wheels Board Meeting and it was a more substantive meeting than we've had in a long time. The bottom line was a major impact on operations. It's not clear, we've kind of come out of it quickly or how. And it's dependent on what happens with the other transit agencies like Mard. And what happens in terms of what people do with working from home, are they still going to be commuting? So there's major structural changes underway. The one good news in this, even though revenues are down by 90% from the Fairbox, there's enough of the CARES kind of funding to come through that we can sustain operations for the next year. And depending on how quickly we come out of this and everything else, we'll be faced either with good news or some real problems a year from now. I think that would be the bottom line. And you shake your head, Councilmember Coomer, is that your understanding of it as well? So there's, there's that. We talked about the, what we're going to do with the Black Lives Matter and all the other requests. And I would, I think, go along with, in terms of matters initiated with the council members Monroe and Carling said, if we could have a formal equivalent pledge called the council's pledge for the next meeting available, that would be, I'd like to see that available to us. So I would like to formally initiate that as an item for that next meeting. It's something, one thing we can do. And then the, then going to another topic here. I think we said sometime in June, we would go to having the public read their messages live. And I see articles in the paper about other communities doing that. I, this is more of a question, what, what's our plan for doing that? I know there are significant issues with, you know, inappropriate comments and images and things like that. So it's more of a question, what, what are we thinking as to when we'll be ready to have the public read their own comments?
So Vice Mayor, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts, again. We are continuing to work on that. And I'm going to ask the city clerk here. I know we still have some work to do on that particular item. But Ms. Weber, do you have any update at this point?
We are still working on that item. And with the approval of the new agenda management system this evening, we've actually, we'll actually start making some progress. So we should be able to provide more information in the near future.
So if I, thank you for that. And what I would want to say is that this is one of those things where we want to do it well. Don't want to mess up. So I'm, I would, where I'm coming out on this is we can, this works reasonably okay. And then we figure out how to do it right. And I don't want you to be in a position to, you know, try something that, that really messes up.
Very good. Thank you.
So that, that's it for me.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. I just wanted to step back for a moment. There were a lot of, we had a couple of comments during the public comment period. I want to address a couple of those. But we see, as I mentioned earlier, we had a letter from Ian Carlin asking the council to oppose SB 902 because it would end single family zoning in California. And we understand that that single family zoning has been used as a tool of racism along with, with redlining. But what I think is important to recognize about Livermore is that, as you saw tonight, with the rezoning of the property on, on the specific, on the City Hall campus, that we provide a wide range of housing, that we want to provide choices. We've zoned homes for, for low income, for very low income. We've even zoned home housing for, for those people that are experiencing homelessness. On the other side of the spectrum, we have family housing. We have single family housing. We also have market rate apartments that are being built right now. So one of the things I think that we do try very hard is to have a wide range of housing so that no one is excluded. That we continue to have housing available for everyone, whether it's very low income, all the way up to people that, that are doing quite well. So that's part of what Livermore is. We have inclusionary housing and we go to great lengths to ensure that we provide a wide range of housing for everyone. Terry Storm had concerns about the First Amendment, specifically the, the sign garden over by Livermoreian Plaza. And I've gotten several emails about that. One of the tricky things about the First Amendment is that applies to everybody. And you may not agree with what someone is saying, but the First Amendment protects that expression. Those signs will be taken down after Juneteenth. It'll be taken down, it'll be taken down June 20th. But as we saw, after the horrific events on May 25th, where we saw George Floyd murdered by someone who was sworn to protect and serve, there was nationwide outrage. We saw in our neighboring cities, we saw looting, rioting, buildings being burned. That didn't happen here. They, the, the young people, the people that organized these, these rallies, they wanted to express their outrage and they did it peacefully. And they did it with the cooperation of our police department. And I think that this is a wonderful expression of how the community feels right there at Livermoreian Plaza. And so I, I think it is a good expression. It's, it gives the community a chance to have their say. There was also a question about providing support for our law enforcement officers. And I think that everyone will agree that we, that we do support our law enforcement officers. I come from a family of law enforcement. My dad was 50 years in law enforcement, third generation. So this is very near and dear to us. At the same time, it is about service with honor, protection with purpose. That is what we have committed to have our, our law enforcement provide. So that's what we have on public comment as far as reporting out. On May 21st, I was at the Alameda County Transportation Commission. On the, the 5th, I was at the Altamont Corridor Express, where again, we got an update on ridership being down and, and going over strategies on what we will need to do to ensure that people feel safe getting back on the train. A lot of folks want to get back into that routine, but they want to make sure that it's, it's safe. Today I was at the multimodal committee. They changed, it used to be the 580 Committee of 580 Express Lanes. And we're changing some of the tolling policies on that committee and on the, in the corridor. Also, we had the Programs and Project Committee. And that's, on that committee today, we actually approved moving ahead with the Dublin Boulevard, North Canyon's Parkway connection and also the County Transportation Plan. Some of the strategies moving ahead with that. So that's it for the reporting out for the meetings. They also attended two, two rallies. These were, they were uplifting in the fact that it shows the next generation of leadership stepping up. That these are, are young people that, that, that are stepping up to make a statement and they're stepping up to make a change. And we need to recognize the importance of incremental change. And I think that's, that's why we continue to fail is because it's a lot of effort to make that incremental change. And, and you can change the rules, you can change the laws, but you have to change people's attitudes and you have to change their mindset. And, and that's why the work is so hard. And that's why we have to continue to work at this. We have to work at this together. And the rally that, that Councilmember Monroe, Councilmember Carling and I attended on Tuesday, there were probably a hundred young people primarily at that. They went downtown. The police department supported the effort and it was, it was very uplifting. The rally on, on Thursday, 500 people there, five, 600 people, it was, it was quite a turnout. And, but these are, these are going to be the next generation of leaders. And I welcome them stepping up because this next generation has to take over. The Civil Rights Act was passed back in the 60s. And we haven't succeeded in changing the mindset. And that's why as each generation comes up, we need to change that mindset and make, it is my sincere hope that this next generation of leaders will be able to solve that. Again, on May 25th, we saw the horrific murder of George Floyd. And in his honor and his memory tonight, I will adjourn this meeting in memory of George Floyd. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, John.